All right, I think we are live and welcome everyone to part two of the recovering through crisis here. Brought to you by Lions of Liberty and Blueprints for Addiction Recovery. I have a great panel today. I'm going to introduce in a minute, just before we get started, just a couple of words about myself. For those of you who don't know me, my name is John Odermatz. I am the host of a little podcast called Felony Friday on the Lions of Liberty Podcast and this livestream, this town hall will play on my podcast replay, I should say, this Friday. So if you're listening now, great, still subscribe to Lions Liberty Podcast and share this with your friends when it comes out on Friday. Felony Friday is all about exposing injustice in the criminal justice system and giving a platform to those who are providing solutions. And the people here today are definitely in that latter category, working to solve a lot of the problems within the system. And the first person I do want to introduce is Chris Drysbook. He is the founder of Blueprints for Addiction Recovery. Welcome back to the town hall, the livestream, the felony Friday, to everything, Chris.
Hey, thanks, John. I really appreciate you setting this whole thing up and being able to figure out how to bring such a thing to everybody. Because if it was up to me, there's a 0% chance this would have gotten done this way.
I think it's a little bit greater than a 0% chance.
All right, it might have been a 1% chance, but I'm excited that we get to talk with this group of panelists that we have assembled together today. Because we have such an interesting group of people. We've got Dave Malloy, who's a police assisted diversion responder down in the heart of everything in Kensington in Philadelphia. He's going to share with us a lot of the stories that he's encountered down there and kind of the Mecca of drug use. And you know, I don't know if that's even a good thing to say, Mecca of drug use. But we also have Chief Wiz from Westland Peter Township Police Department, who I've gotten to know very well over the last little while, working with him on diverting individuals from incarceration to treatment. And we've also got our warden here at Lancaster County Prison, Cheryl Steeburger, who I've also gotten to know, who also has a tremendous mind for helping others and really progressive, forward thinking individual that I can't wait to hear from about a lot of the plans that she has to make people's lives better, who are already incarcerated. And we have Shannon Moore, awesome, awesome individual in long-term recovery. A guy who also you might remember from the WWE and WCW. So we're going to get to hear some great stories from him and his personal recovery. And then also John Podora, who is running for state representative in the 37th District of Pennsylvania on a platform of ending the addiction crisis and introducing some legislation to help individuals out. So this panel is definitely going to be awesome and I'm looking forward to being a part of it.
Well, that's great. And just before you introduce the panelists and they talk, I just want to remind everyone listening that ask questions. So what we're going to do is kind of go around the virtual room here and each panelist is going to get to talk for, I don't know, 10 or 15 minutes. When they're talking, if you think of a question, something you want to ask them, just wherever you're watching this YouTube, Facebook, just drop a comment there. They are all pulled in and we can see all of them. So we will answer, provide the address or say who you are addressing the question to, and we will give that question to that panelist. So I'll stop fumbling my words and pass it back to you, Chris.
All right, awesome. We might as well kick this panel off with one of my favorite people in the entire world. I got to know Dave. He was actually the first recovery speaker that I ever heard in my entire life in 2007. And I give him a lot of credit for my own personal sobriety, my own personal recovery. He's been a staunch supporter of me from day one, when I met him and we kicked a hacky sack together at a fancy rehab. And you know, the work Dave's doing down in Philadelphia is an inspiration to the work that we're doing here. And hopefully the work that's going to start all across the country. So with that, I'm going to give you Dave Malloy.
Thank you very much, Chris, and thank you, John, for the opportunity. Thank you for putting this together. I want to second what Chris said. Definitely if this was left up to two idiots like me and him, I would say it's a 0.01% chance that this would have happened. I want to start by saying it's mind boggling to me if somebody would have told me 17 years ago, you're going to be on a panel with a prison warden, a chief of police, a guy running for state representative and a wrestler. I would have asked for a shot at whatever it was that you were drinking because that's certainly not going to happen for me. So it's an honor to hopefully shed some light on some of the stuff that's been happening. Obviously, this whole COVID-19 thing is unprecedented. I'd never experienced anything like this in my life. You know, when it first started, I was like, ah, it's two weeks, it'll be fine. And here we are, six months later. So an interesting side note, I identify as a person in long-term recovery. And I think one of the benefits of my previous experience and my current experience is that I can see things from both sides of the table. Like I had been, you know, through the criminal justice system multiple times, in and out of treatment centers, throughout the, for lack of better words, treatment industrial complex, if you will, in and out, up and down and sideways. And now I'm on the other side of it and I feel like some of my past experience can be beneficial to what I'm trying to do now. So I've been in this field. I entered recovery April 23rd of 2004 and I started in this field as a counselor's assistant in 2006. Initially, I was answering phones and just kind of worked my way up. Early 2007, got a bachelor's degree in 2010, became a counselor. And then in 2013, I got a master's degree and things have, my experience in this field has just evolved. About two years ago, I became involved in a, what we call a mobile unit. What we started to notice down in Philadelphia was that there was a gap in service delivery. And this gap was, individuals had a difficult time. They would have a window of opportunity where they would say, man, I really want help. But that window closes very quickly for a lot of different reasons, whether it's they got money, they had a little come up, they had a little hustle going on and now they got some money. So we wanted to capitalize on when that window was open. And one of the things that we identified was if we can get to that individual and get them engaged in treatment when they make that decision, there's a better chance of success. Oftentimes, and I can speak from my own experience, I was always going to detox tomorrow, next week, next month, after this check comes, I'm waiting on the mailman. Like that was a constant thread throughout my addiction. So we got an SUV and we started this, we kind of identified certain areas of the city where there would be a high concentration of folks that were struggling and we started going down there and just seeing where we could be helpful. And from a treatment perspective, this kind of idea, this modality of care, there's not a lot of robust research around it. So as we started to do that, we partnered with the University of Pennsylvania, who was kind of going behind us and doing some data analysis and doing some research. And they uncovered a couple of interesting things, things that I wasn't expecting. So the first thing that they identified was that the individuals that we engaged, and a lot of times it was various homeless encampments, people living under bridges, people kind of congregating in one location. The individuals that we engaged and got access into care, when you looked at their histories, they were not previously engaged in services, which is a hugely positive thing. That means we're reaching a population that wasn't getting access. The second thing that they noticed was after engaging in treatment, once they came into a program, they engaged at a higher level than individuals that just came into treatment in a regular fashion. That information is all, it's in draft form currently. It's not officially out. At the end of all this, I'll share my email if anybody wants to follow up. Once that paper is published, I'll be happy to share it. Think the results speak for themselves. One of the things that we identified in doing that was there's a individualized, like something that happens for somebody who's engaged this treatment industrial complex for so long, where you're almost not even a person, you're a number. And what started to happen, at least in my perception with folks, is they actually felt that the people that were talking to them actually cared. And there was a follow-up. Years ago, I heard somebody say it and I, you know, I chuckle when I think of my early experiences in this field. I was always trying to say the right thing or say the most profound thing or drop some spiritual pearl of wisdom that was going to change everybody's life. And what we've learned is people want to feel heard, you know, and when they leave, they may not remember what you said, but they're going to remember the way that they felt when they left you. And we really try to instill that in our outreach workers and the people that are engaging people directly on the street to kind of foster that. So that I believe is what was behind the success of that. So I want to fast forward to March of this year, this whole COVID-19 thing happened and everything just got shut down. In Kensington, I mean, pretty much the police presence was null and void as of like March, whatever, 15th it was. And you know, I had been here, you know, for those two months, we were doing a lot of working remotely and I was kind of like assisting with our call center and making sure people were still getting access to care. As a company, the company I work for is called Merikee. We began to look very early on and it's like, we need to do something innovative here to keep things going. And we moved all of our programs over to telehealth. I want to just say a quick shout out, the idea of telehealth and the relaxation of the regulations around telehealth was something that was tremendously beneficial in enabling programs to continue to provide people care. As things kind of go back to normal, it's my sincere hope and desire that we can show concrete data and evidence of how telehealth has been able to not only enable people to maintain access to care, but in a lot of cases has improved care. At least I can speak for on the long-term medication assisted treatment side. A lot of times we lose folks to care later on because they can't keep up with the coming into the clinic every day and keeping up with their counselor. Having telehealth in place enables those individuals to do a Zoom session after hours so that they, you know, don't have to lose time at work. And what we're finding out is that if we keep this in place, that may encourage people to remain engaged in treatment for a longer period of time. Where previously, those individuals would end up walking off, you know, we would lose them to care, they would walk off to the clinic. And nine times out of 10, within a year, if not less, we get a call from a local treatment center or, you know, they're calling the intake department and they're coming back in to get reassessed and reevaluated and get back started again. So it's my sincere hope, and I wanted to take a moment just to throw that out there, that folks can can get that access and, you know, as these regulations kind of go back to normal, perhaps some of them, they can keep in place for a while because it's really been beneficial. One of the other things that we did was, and I attribute this to our, and this gentleman was previously the medical director for Blueprint for Addiction Recovery, our medical director, Dr. Bob, I affectionately refer to as the mad scientist. Because of the regulations, there are certain things that still had to be done in person for individuals that were engaging in methadone maintenance treatment. So he created this office that was completely made of Plexiglas and used a, and I'm not kidding, I'm not making this up, a tattoo table, like, and he attached it to the side of the Plexiglas so that we can continue to engage folks as they were coming in for treatment. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to engage them. So this whole thing, it exploded in Kensington. May 18th was our first day back out in the field. We stayed locked, you know, we kind of were like suspended operations for those two months where we weren't out in the field. And I got to be honest with you guys, the first day that we were out there, it was quite a sight. Like I've never, there's like just hundreds of people, homeless, people just living out on the street, trash everywhere, just a really, really bad situation. And look, addiction is a genuinely lonely place. Those of us that are involved in our own personal recoveries, we speak a lot about being connected and staying connected. And addiction is a very lonely place and it's also incredibly challenging when you have something like COVID-19 happening because what that does is it almost makes recovery an incredibly lonely place. Because you can't have that connected feeling, you can't have that connection with folks. So when we first got out there, we realized we need to figure something out. And there was a lot of restrictions, a lot of the assessment centers, which were also located in hospitals, were not seeing patients because of the different COVID things and restrictions. And there was just people, you know, people needed to get some help. And we began to do these kind of mobile assessments and again, through the beauty of telehealth and technology, we're able to use Zoom and get people connected to other providers. And little by little, we started to make a difference and get people off the street. We definitely have a long way to go. I can't stress that enough. You know, this is definitely going to be something that's ongoing, just my own personal opinion. I think the treatment is going to fundamentally change. The impact of COVID-19 is affecting a very marginalized population in a very significant way. So we're going to be needing to focus a lot on resources and connecting people to resources and kind of treating the whole person. I'm pretty amazed that, you know, there's about 100 people that are living in McPherson Square right now in Kensington. Just, you know, just out there. And it's amazing to me how many people I walk up to and talk to that have recovery experience. They know what to say, that, you know, I mean, multiple, they were probably, you know, community leaders at the detox. The last time they were there, they were probably house manager at the recovery house. They have, they have received plenty of addiction treatment. And now with COVID-19, they're all competing for resources and the resources just aren't there. So I think as addiction professionals, we need to kind of adjust what we're doing to focus more on resources and get people connected. One of the other neat things that Merikee has been doing is kind of like branching out one of our kind of company objectives over the next several years is to become more focused on integrated healthcare. Meaning, you know, especially now with these folks that are out on the street, a lot of times I can't get them directly into a treatment center because they have significant medical problems going on that need to be addressed first. So what we're realizing is if we want to have and improve the outcomes of the individuals that are in our care, we're going to need to look at more than just having them sit in a group. We need to look at all of them and figure out all the different parts of them and what things we can do to help them address different things. COVID-19 kind of impacted it, but we had a partnership with Career Link where we were doing recovery through work, where like individuals in the program could enter this, I used to call it employment bootcamp, where you're kind of like assigned to this particular group and it's eight weeks long and it's intense and it's all about job readiness, job employment. What are your interests? Do you need to get some schooling in? And it prepares you for the next step. All of these things kind of centered, and I know it's a cliche right now in the treatment industry, around personal wellness. I think those things are critical to what we're going to be doing as professionals going forward. I wanted to just end on this, the idea of criminal justice reform and talk briefly about the partnership that we have with the East Service Division in the 24th District down in Philadelphia. So there's a bunch of police officers, it's a division within the 24th District. And we just kind of do what's called co responding with them. We go out into like low-risk situations, whether it's a quality of life issue or homeless people out on the street. And we try to engage folks on a different level. Very recently, we began to do what's called diversions where folks are taken from low-level arrests and diverted into our care where their arrest is waived, they're not arrested. And we can get them into care. And I wanted to share one little kind of anecdotal story because this just happened the other day and it was really cool for me to witness. This individual was arrested at 9:00 AM for shoplifting. She was in the middle of a one-week-long cocaine binge. She was arrested at 9:00 AM. At about 9:20, they determined that she was going to be put into the diversion program and she was not going to be processed. We were notified, she was brought to our office at 9:35 and one of my staff members started her assessment. And by 10 minutes after 11, which is if you're tracking at home, it's two hours and 10 minutes, she was in a bed at a treatment center. That was really cool to be a part of. The idea that somebody could be arrested at 9:00 and in rehab by 10 minutes after 11:00 is something that I want to continue being a part of. So I'm sure, you know, I'll kind of go off on a tangent, I'm sure later during the questions. But I want to end just by thanking everybody and also by saying, I'm really interested to hear what the chief and the warden from the jail have to say and some different ideas. Because I think kicking these ideas around and where it's at with coming up with what's going to work. So thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Dave. That was very informative. I've already spent plenty of time with you today. But our next panelist is coincidentally the chief of police in Westland Peter Township here in Lancaster County. Chief Wiz, as he is affectionately known. And I have worked together now for over a year doing exactly what Dave is talking about, is taking low-level offenders and diverting them to treatment instead of incarceration. And I think Chief Wiz is going to have a lot of good things to say about this situation. So I'm going to hand it over to him.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for the invite and John, thanks for setting this up. I appreciate it. Chris, I just want to say, I would have paid good money to see you kick a hacky sack around with anybody. That would have been pretty cool to see. So I've been a cop for about 30 years. I started in 1990. I've been in chief of Westland Peter Township since August of 2014. And before that, I was in with Lancaster City Police. I got hired in 1990 with Lancaster City Police. Spent about 24 and a half years in the city. I worked my way up through the ranks and retired as captain patrol division. And then retired on a Friday and then was hired on a Monday by Westland Peter as chief of police. When I was in Lancaster City, I had a lot of tremendous opportunities. I grew up under a philosophy of community policing. In fact, in 1993, I was pulled from patrol division and assigned to a community policing unit. And we worked in a high-drug, high-crime area, a very small area, about a 10 or 12-block area. There were six cops assigned to that area. And we had a lot of good experiences. We learned a lot. Dave, first of all, Dave, I want to thank you for what you do. That's kind of ground zero. For those of you that don't know, I'm sure probably most of you do know, but Kensington's kind of ground zero in this area for the problem. So Dave, I appreciate you doing what you're doing. And but anyway, so grew up under this community policing philosophy. And community policing means a lot of things, a lot of different people, but it pretty much encompasses two components. And it's community partnerships and problem solving. And I will circle back to that a little later as I talk here. So as a patrol officer working in this area, Dave, you mentioned that people just want to be heard. And we certainly realized that in this area that we were working, we were doing a lot of details, a lot of drug details because that was a significant part of the problem that was happening there. You know, we learned that we weren't getting a lot of help and from the neighborhoods and we didn't quite figure out why at first. And so eventually we gave out some surveys and we had the surveys back and we realized that we weren't really focusing on the concerns that the neighbors had. And we learned that lesson, Dave, that you said, people just want to be heard. And once we started working on the problems that they felt were important, then we began getting help dealing with the issues that were kind of plaguing that area. But as a cop, you know, anecdotally, I can tell you, we spent about 90% of our time dealing with about 10% of the population. And most of our crimes, the huge majority of our crimes, part one and part two are frankly drug-related. Whether we're talking about robberies, burglaries, homicides, assaults, DUIs, domestics, vandalism, many times, drugs are the core of the problem. Whether someone that's committing a crime that's supported habit, robberies, thefts, it's, the drugs are at the core. And even if it's not, if it's a DUI or a domestic, many times the people who are actually committing these crimes are under the influence. So again, drugs being the primary driver of the crimes that we're dealing with. And, you know, if somebody's out there that they don't think they have a drug problem in their community, then I would respectfully suggest that you're living under a rock. The drug problem is pretty much everywhere and people are, I think, we're now more than ever kind of waking up and realizing that for so many years, it was frustrating for me when I was in the city PD because, you know, people in the county, the rest of the county, like, ah, it's a city problem, drugs are a city problem. And clearly, it wasn't just a city problem. It was happening everywhere. People just weren't recognized that. And, you know, as a cop, we want to solve problems. That's kind of what we, that's kind of what we do. That's kind of what we want to do. We take pride in that. Cops enjoy that. And for most of us, that's actually why we became cops. We recognize and, you know, certainly when I was doing the drug details and drug arrests, I realized that you're not going to stop the flow of drugs. It's just not going to happen. And it's a simple supply and demand. And if you can't stop the supply, then you have to work on addressing the demand. So as our cops, you know, our resources are very limited in dealing with those issues. And relative to the supply, but we can impact the demand. Certainly with policing, it's difficult, but we need to use those other resources and some of which Dave talked about. And then some Chris referenced second chance and I want to get to that as well. But we know that simply arresting someone is not going to solve the problem. We're not going to arrest her way out of this problem. Most people arrested for simple possession, frankly, they don't go to jail. I'm not talking about delivery. I'm not talking possession with attempted delivery. I'm just talking a straight, simple possession charge. Most people are not going to jail for any period of time. In Pennsylvania, simple possession, it's an ungraded misdemeanor. So you're talking at best probation for many people. And my point to that is, these people who are experiencing this issue, they're not removed from the problem then. They might go in, they might get processed. And it wasn't uncommon for me to make an arrest. You know, we would process the prisoner, we would turn them over to civilian to process the prisoner. And the prisoner would be at the door before I was done finishing the paperwork on my end. And they go right back to that same environment, that same environment that Dave was referring to, which is obviously, that's what's enabling the continuation of that problem. And even if they do go to jail, frankly, they're going to get out at some point. And when they get out of the warden's house there, they're going right back in that same environment. You know, Dave, Dave referenced this and, you know, we can, I always say we can wax philosophically whether drug issue, the drug problem is disease or not. And there's a meme that some probably saw on social media. It's the two girls arguing with that cat. Most people have seen that. And the girls are saying, you know, drug addiction is a disease and the cat says, how are you going to go out and catch crackhead? That's kind of a rough way of saying it, but I think that strikes at the core of the issue. You know, it's whether it's a disease or whether it's not a disease. And that's not my point here because again, I said, we can wax philosophically about that one way or another. But and I'm not making light of anybody who's struggling with the disease of addiction. But for the average street cop, they don't care whether it's a disease or not. They don't care whether it's classified as disease or not. We just want to stop dealing with the same people committing the same crimes. We want to stop people from dying. So whether it's disease or not, it's not the forefront of the issues that we're addressing. Again, because we're dealing with that 90% of the population dealing, committing about that 10% of the crimes. One of the biggest issues we have when we arrest somebody, if they're in the system, we'll say maybe a year ago in Lancaster County. When we arrest somebody, you know, unless we arrest them Monday through Friday, between 8:30 and maybe 4 o'clock, there's not a lot of help we can get them. Most of the county offices are closed. That's where a lot of these services are provided. And if they want, even if they want help at that time, we have no place to turn them over to unless, like I said, it's that Monday through Friday. Even if it is, once they get out, they have to be willing to go to wherever that county facility is, the services are, to get their services. We never had an opportunity to really work with anybody outside of that system. We never had an opportunity to, to, to really work with anybody outside of, of that system. Which was a significant problem. And as many of you know, trying to navigate the system for even somebody in the healthiest mindset and has all the faculties about it on the best day is difficult. Somebody who's struggling at that time, I mean, trying to navigate that system, it's just, it's just not, it's not possible, which is not going to happen. And, and you know, I said, referenced a few years ago, where we are now, we have that option. We have, we have another option. So we make an arrest now or we come across somebody who has an addiction and we have the availability of using second chance certified recovery specialist. We, we can, if we, we have that issue, we have somebody, we arrest them for something. Or even if we come across them for something and they're, you know, we're, we're dealing with them, they might be homeless. And they don't have, they don't have a place to go. They have an addiction. They've, they've lost everything and we're listening to that story. And again, if it's, you know, before this, it was Monday through Friday. Not during business hours, we were going to have troubles, but we can now, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We can actually reach out and we can contact second chance PA. And they'll send a certified recovery specialist to us while we have this person. And they will help navigate the system for that person and get them into recovery. And we've used them several times, a number of times. Again, whether it's, it's pre-arrest or post-arrest, it doesn't matter. If, if we, we have the, I tell my officers, Chris and his team came in, they did some training for officers. And I tell my officers, you know, you have the option, whether you are going to criminally charge somebody if they have the drugs on them. Or are you just going to refer them to second chance? And, and many times that's all they're doing. They're referring them to second chance, which is, which is what we want. Because again, you know, I referenced community policing, problem solving and community partnerships. That's what second chance PA is. That's exactly what it is. It embodies both of those issues, community partnership. We reach out to them twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We call them up, they send somebody and they help that person. And it's problem solving. Again, we're not going to arrest our way out of the system. We're dealing with ninety percent of the crime. It's dealing with ten percent of the same people. One day they're a victim, the next day they're suspect. One day they're might be robbing somebody, the next day they're the ones that are getting robbed for that same reason. If we can stop that cycle, we're benefiting everybody. We're benefiting, benefiting the, the victim out there. We're benefiting the person that is, is addicted, is afflicted with this disease. And, and we're certainly benefiting our community as whole. And we're using our resources better instead of just spinning our wheels and making the same arrest, the same time over and over and over. You know, when we're, as a, as a patrol cop, you're making a drug arrest, as I said, these guys are walking out the door. Ten minutes after you arrest them on a, on a good day, because you're getting processed and they're walking out. And it would not be uncommon for our cops that are doing surveillance to see the same guys like, hey, this, this dude is back at it again. He's right back in the same spot that he is, getting drugs again. Of course, they're trying to serve the, that habit and they're trying to support that habit. So they're going to get right back in that same environment. But if we can remove them from that environment and we can get them that help that they need when they need it, when they're, when they're most vulnerable. We, we stand a much better chance of getting to where we need to get. And you know, we're obviously, as, as many know, we're in the middle of this opioid epidemic. And despite what some may think, the zombie apocalypse here, the COVID pandemic slowed a lot of things down, but it did not slow down drug use, the opioid epidemic and the issues that, that people are struggling with right now. So you know, I, I can't say second chance, second chances program is a panacea. You know, it may not work for everybody, but I can tell you this, it certainly works for us. Every community, every county, every state's unique and it has its own needs and has its own problems, its own way to serve. But with second chance to us from Lancaster County is it fills a gap that we never had before to fill. Sending somebody out right away, right? We, we called them up and these guys had been, these guys had been awesome. And they, they follow up, they let us know. And I was fortunate enough to, Chris invited me over to, to blueprints. And, and I was able to sit there and listen to some people talk about the struggles that they have. And, and you know, the world that Dave's living in almost daily. I, I, I get to hear that. And as a cop, we normally don't get to hear that. We hear, we're seeing people at their worst, at the worst time of their life. We're dealing with them, we're arresting them, or again, they're, they're, they're just that far down their luck. They're reaching out to, to somebody and, and reaching out for some help. We, quite often, we don't get to see the success part of it. And what's great about second chance and, and the opportunity that I had is we are able to see this, that success and that end of it. And, and it's rewarding, you know, it's, it's kind of the rewarding part of, of that when, when you see somebody who you knew struggled. And then they get out on the other side and they come out positive. So it's a, it's, it's a minimal risk at, at most was a second chance for a, a community to give this a shot. When Chris called me up and explained this whole program to me, man, I, I jumped in with both feet. Because again, seeing what I saw as a street cop, knowing the frustration level of frustration, dealing with the same issues. For us to be able to address people and, and get them on the right path is a, is a huge opportunity. And one that we didn't have a chance to before this. So Chris, I really appreciate what you've done.
Thanks, Chief. I really appreciate those words. And I think to add a little bit of light to what you were saying, I know Cheryl's on the screen now. But the one individual that Chief got to meet while he was in treatment was somebody who was diverted through his department, who had several grams of meth. And that individual would have, in normal circumstances, been incarcerated that night more than likely. But the officer who arrested him, or in theory arrested him, maybe encountered him, reached out to second chance and we got him into treatment that night. And right now I believe that individual is eleven months sober, still doing extremely well. And it just speaks volumes to working with police and working with law enforcement to get people the help that they need. So thank you, Chief, for everything. And we're going to move on to our next panelist, Warden Cheryl Steeburger. I hope I didn't butcher your name too bad on this live thing. But we have been working together for the last couple of weeks, months on seeing what we could do to help the individuals who are currently incarcerated in Lancaster County Prison. And I've gotten to meet with your staff and I've gotten to know just how they feel about criminal justice as a whole and how they look at individuals as people who need help. And I'm really looking forward to hearing about some of your plans and some of the things that we've already talked about, but not everybody knows. And so with that, I'm going to give you Warden Cheryl Steeburger.
Thank you. And thanks, John, for setting this up. I appreciate the invite, Chris. And I, I just have to say, you know, listening to Dave and the chief talk, I, I, I just applaud you for what you do. Chief, I can't even imagine how many individuals you have stopped from coming into my facility just by using the second chance initiative. You know, so I'm grateful to you and to the partners in our community. If you would have told me twenty-six years ago, when I started this job, that I would be doing this and talking about reentry, I would have called you crazy. You know, when I started, it was lock them up, throw away the key. Not so much anymore. I came up through the ranks here at the facility, starting from a correctional officer up to sergeant and the whole way up. Became the warden four years ago. And I'll be honest, security was my forte. You know, working out on the units with the inmates, a treatment, I didn't have a good treatment side. In these past four years, we have just dove in, there was already a lot going on. We've added to it. I think we're doing, you know, a tremendous job. That's not to say that we have a long way to go. Kind of repeating a lot of what those before me have spoke about, you know, there, there's things we still need to work on. And I welcome those ideas and suggestions. Here at the facility, my population today stands at six hundred and fifty-three. I can tell you days, times when my population was thirteen hundred. So that speaks volumes for the good that's going on in our community and the programs and, you know, working along with those community partners. You know, we average six thousand admissions here at the facility a year. And we also release quite about the same, about sixty-two hundred a year. So that's individuals coming in and out. As I was listening to the chief talking, you know, and he would say, he mentioned that, you know, it wouldn't be anything to see the individual back on the street that they had arrested that afternoon. I, I can, I can relate to those stories, you know? Seeing individuals coming in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-eight times is not uncommon. So what do you do? What should we do? What do we need to do as a community? So here at LCP, our inmate services department, along with the community partners, provide a variety of educational classes to address the many challenges faced by our inmates that are returning out into our communities. We have anger management, the chaplaincy groups. Our chaplaincy program is one of the best in the state. We have a, a staff of five, but we have over two hundred and forty chap, volunteer chaplains that help with our inmate population and continue to follow up with those individuals once they leave here. We have a children of incarcerated program here that we work along with Compass Mark here in our community. Drug and alcohol. We, we also run a full school out of, currently we don't because of COVID. We run a full school district of Lancaster, a, a school in our, on our one floor. An area that is designated for high school diploma and credit recovery and the high set programming. Job search and readiness classes, life skills, mental health classes and parenting classes. New to us and something I just want to talk a little bit about is our reentry program. This was started about two years ago, we hired a reentry manager. So we have a reentry manager full-time on board. And we also have a case worker that's full-time and a coordinator for our reentry program that's full-time. So that's dedicating our time, you know, to, to help those individuals, to assist those individuals, you know, pre-release. An area that we need some assistance on and are working diligently on is our post-release end of that. So with our reentry program here in the facility, it's a two-week-long program. Sixty hours, both male and female, we run both classes. They're going through goal-setting, job-searching, budgeting and boundaries, trauma, career link. Assist us with our classes. We have many speakers that come in during that two-week period. Thus far, we started our classes actually a year ago this September. Thus far, we had sixty-one inmates graduate from the program. Now, of course, COVID has slowed things down. We were able to run one class just recently, but we had to shut things down of COVID-related. But we're dedicated and committed to making that program work. You know, I can tell you many stories, the individuals attending those classes. We've had several inmates attending those classes that their release date was coming up prior to them finishing and completing the class, the sessions, the reentry classes. And they actually asked if they could stay in jail longer, just so they complete, could complete the reentry program. That's how highly it's respected, it's looked at. You know, there's a list of individuals waiting to get in that class. So, and we actually allowed them to stay longer. We reached out to the judge and received permission to allow that to happen. I, I, I struggled daily with phone calls with parents, loved ones, families, friends, asking for help. You know, you know, their son shouldn't be allowed back out in the community. I'm afraid he will die if he comes back out into the community. Warden, what can you do for us? So there's a lot of struggles there because our average stay here is about a hundred and twelve days. So we only have that individual for that short amount of time. And you can only imagine how difficult it is to, you know, concentrate on that one individual that needs that dedicated help. We also have here at the facility a vivitrol program. And if I could just, if I could just mention here, it's a one-month receptor, excuse me. It's, yeah, it's a one-month receptor blocker for opiates and alcohol. And this is a voluntary program. And those that do apply could be turned away if they don't meet a criteria. So there's a report that's run, we, we, we keep statistics on the intakes and the release of those individuals. You know, and the injections that are provided here at the facility and then the follow-up outside of the facility. So the vivitrol program is new here at the facility, again, committed to helping those with the addiction. And then mental illness is a big part of who we are and our part in, in helping those individuals that enter into our facility and just honestly should not be here, but they are. So we have weekly meetings discussing those inmates that have severe mental illness as well as, you know, those that could be, that, that, that just aren't, I guess I would say responding to the environment here within the facility. The team consists of representatives from all, many departments in the county. So our mental illness and substance abuse team, our MISA team is doing wonderful things, working along with our partners and getting those individuals, the, the, the behavior programs they need and the treatment that is needed while they're in here. But it continues to be a struggle. You know, it prevent, it presents many problems here in the facility. We often see that those type of individuals, you know, have dual diagnosis, you know, mental health. And then they might have a drug, they have the drug addiction that goes along with it. And of course, we're relying on a lot of this to be self-admission when they're entering into our facility. And these individuals, you know, are assaulted while they're here, you know, and are just a daily, it's a daily effort to keep up with their needs. But again, we're committed. You know, our facility alone presents some problems because it is a rather old facility and we're working on that also. But I, I'm happy with the way things are going, but we have such a long way to go yet. And again, it's working on that, that, that end when the individual leaves us, that the post end of it. You know, we're, we're working hard at the pre-end of it, but we, we still have a long way to go. And I, again, I, you know, Chris had mentioned that we had met several weeks ago. And I just was amazed as I toured his facility and I was motivated to continue our efforts. And I'm great that we had partnered, looking forward to what the future is going to bring for us and, and those that, you know, are residents here. You know, I, I admire what you do as well. And yeah, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Warden Steeburger. I appreciate that. And one of the things that we're really looking at doing and Warden Steeburger's spearheading the effort is to get at least one or two certified recovery specialists in the prison, working with her staff to ensure that individuals who are incarcerated get access to care and can work with the prison counselors and the prison reentry staff. So that's something that is a person who was formerly incarcerated, I never had access to. And in two thousand and four, five, six, seven, if I had access to that, who knows where my story would have led me. I could have avoided several hundred days in jail and, and a whole bunch of pain and suffering for my family, some of whom are watching currently. So thank you so much for joining us, Warden Steeburger. I appreciate you. With that, we're going to move into some stories of personal recovery and some triumph over addiction, some folks who've experienced a lot of life. And, you know, I got to know Shannon a few weeks ago when we were introduced through our friend from the last town hall X-PAC, Sean Waltman. And Shannon's going to share with us a little bit of his personal story and some of the things he's encountered in his life, some of the things he's suffered from and the ways he's overcome them and moved into some holistic personal recovery. So Shannon, thanks for joining us, man. Really excited to hear from you.
Appreciate you having me on, Chris. Man, that, the second chance program like sounds amazing. Chief Brian and Warden, like the work that you guys are doing, you know, I wish there was a way that the media could hear the work that you guys are doing. You know, along with the second chance program and just, just put it out there, like we, we need that out there. We need it in society right now. You know, and that's, that's speaking on my personal, I guess, my personal journey into recovery and just how it all unfolded. You know, I was, I'm a pro wrestler, you know, I've been pro, I got into pro wrestling industry, you know, whenever I was nine, ten years old. You know, and I feel like I'm a, you know, whenever we're addicts or alcoholics, a lot of it's got to do, we're a product of our past. And I just think that, you know, like I, I had kind of a childhood of chaos. And I just think that, you know, like I, I had kind of a childhood of chaos. Um, I guess you would say, uh, growing up, you know, I, I didn't have the, the principles that most, you know, children get in a normal household, you know, along like a lot of us that are in recovery or a lot of us that end up drug addicts or, you know, alcoholics. Um, and then on top of that, you know, not having those principles and thrown into an entertainment industry where, you know, like you have, you know, eighteen years old, you know, I had unlimited money from, and just, you know, from there it just goes downhill whenever you already have these issues. And, you know, you all, you got this past that you carry along with you along the way. And, uh, you know, you're just trying to stuff this stuff down with, uh, you know, with the drugs and the alcohol and the lifestyles that we just kind of get wrapped up into. And it's just one of those things where, um, I'm just grateful, you know, for a company, you know, uh, WWE, that's the company that I wrestled for. And, you know, whenever I got to that point to where, you know, I was fortunate enough to have, you know, enough money to be able to take care of my habits. So a lot of the crime, that wasn't part of my story. I didn't have to rob. I didn't have to steal or do a lot of the things that some people, they end up, you know, being arrested for. But, you know, it did come to a point where my drug use was so bad that it was either going to end up, you know, in a facility or, you know, locked up in prison or dead. Like there was no, no other way it was going to go. Um, you know, at that point, like I, I didn't care about my career. I didn't care about nothing. You know, as far as my wife, my family, none of that, none of that mattered at that point. And, uh, you know, Chief, like whenever you guys are arresting, you know, a lot of these people out on the streets and, you know, a, a lot of us that whenever you do arrest somebody like that, like they're at that point, they're at that bottom to where, you know, nothing else really matters other than trying to figure out how to get that next drink or that next drug and they're willing to go to whatever lengths it is. And the fact that you guys are recognizing that now and, you know, you've given second chance, you know, a chance to actually help recreate these people's lives and give them the opportunity to be able to, to, uh, to change, you know, that's amazing. That's amazing work. And, uh, you know, WWE, they gave me the opportunity to, to be able to change my life because I knew nothing about, you know, treatment centers. I knew nothing about, uh, twelve-step programs. Um, I knew nothing about, you know, asking for help. Um, it just wasn't part of my childhood. That was stuff that was never, you know, it was knowledge that I never had. And, you know, out there on the streets like these days, that, that's, that's the case. Like there's no knowledge about how to get out of those situations. People just, they're not educated to the point to be able to, you know, figure out like, well, if I go to treatment or if I can get involved in a twelve-step program, I might have a chance. I might have some hope. Um, so, you know, this second chance program, man, like it's amazing for you guys to be able to give somebody that opportunity because that's what WWE did for me. Like WWE, whenever I called for help, like they put me in treatment and, you know, it was, it was there where I got the knowledge to be able to change myself, to be able to recreate my life. Um, you know, through working a twelve-step program and through connecting myself with a network that could show me the fundamentals and the principles to be able to, to live a life, you know, and, and now a life of service. Cause now, you know, like I, I'm still involved in pro wrestling, but also, you know, I, I work in a treatment center now. And, uh, uh, you know, I, I'm a recovery, uh, support specialist, uh, here in Tampa, Florida. And, you know, like we don't have programs like second chance here. And, you know, we have those ground zero spots here too. So I think, man, like that's something that I would love to be part of, to be able to bring to Tampa and to be able to work with law enforcement or, you know, um, other wardens or whoever it is that that could step in. And like, we could bring this thing to Tampa because it's going to save lives ultimately. And, uh, you know, that's what it's all about. Cause it's like you said, Chief, you know, whenever, whenever you do work with somebody and you give them the knowledge and the fundamentals and you give them the opportunity to be able to recreate their lives and they do so and they come out on the other side, like there's no better feeling than that. And, uh, it's just amazing. Like you guys are doing just super work up there with this thing.
Thanks, Shannon. That's a heck of an endorsement. And, uh, you know, I appreciate that personally. You want to talk a little bit about, you know, what it looked like the last time you were about to go to treatment? Uh, kind of the feelings that you had, the, uh, different situations that you were experiencing in your own life. And then, uh, you know, what your treatment experience looked like. And then maybe a little bit about what your life's like right now and, you know, how you're feeling and uh, the different ways that your life is better as a result of, uh, experiencing treatment.
Yeah. So the end of my, you know, like toward the end of my drug use, um, you know, like I, I had nowhere else to turn. Like it was, uh, it was to the point where, you know, I had owned real estate, like I, you know, I had owned my own businesses. Um, you know, I had pro wrestling, but you know, I, by that point, like I didn't care about wrestling. I didn't care about nothing. And I'd, I'd pretty much just walked away from, you know, the last wrestling contract that was offered to me. And I was just sitting home and, you know, I was sitting home and every day like it was just living in misery because I was, you know, just bound by drugs and alcohol. Like that's, that's all I wanted in my life. And, you know, the, after, you know, went through a divorce and lost my businesses to the point where I was pretty much going to end up homeless. And, you know, my last, my last week out, like, uh, you know, I'll never forget it because I put this plan together that was guaranteed to pretty much land me either in prison for the last, for the last part of my life. Um, or it was going to end up me dead. Like that was, that was going to be my last week. Um, until, you know, WWE stepped in. Um, you know, I, I made one last phone call just to, uh, talk to a friend and, um, you know, that was in WWE that I actually seen go through the process of treatment and actually, you know, recover and was living in recovery. And whenever I made that phone call to him, and the reason that I made that phone call is because he's, you know, I seen the way he was living. Like, um, he's somebody that, you know, I'd partied with back in the day and somebody that, you know, like that, that's what our friendship was, was partying back in the day. But I seen him change his life. And, um, you know, that gave me enough hope for some reason to reach out to him one last time and just go, hey, man, like I just want to be happy again. I don't know what I gotta do, but I think if, you know, I don't get some sort of help, like this is going to be my last week. Like I just don't think I'm going to be able to make it through this week without doing something that's going to drastically change my life forever. And, um, you know, that's, that's whenever he reached out and to WWE and WWE sent me to treatment. And, um, you know, cause they have a wellness policy there that's, you know, is saving lives now. Like I've seen it work. And, uh, it worked for me. And, you know, like it, it's amazing that companies are doing this. Um, you know, that are, are willing to take a chance and willing to send someone to treatment, um, rather than turn their back on them. Um, so, you know, I, I called for help, um, you know, within twenty-four hours, I was sitting in a treatment facility um, in Tampa, Florida. And, um, you know, my journey started there. Like it was just, you know, from day one, it was just knowledge. It was just, um, you know, like obviously I went through a detox process and, you know, in the detox process, like they started like giving me information about these twelve-step programs that are available. And, um, you know, at first it was just kind of like, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know if this is for me. I'm just going to put some time between my drug use and, you know, I'm not, I'm not worried about it. Like once, once I put some time between my drug use, I'm going to go right back out there and things are going to be perfect and things are going to be fixed. But that's just not how it works. Um, that's why I think it's incredible with what the second chance program is doing because, you know, they're allowing people instead of just being locked up and, you know, putting some time between their drug use because they're forced to, as soon as they hit the streets again, like that would have been my case. If I'd have hit the streets and thirty days after I went through a detox, uh, program, like I, I would have probably would have been right back using. I think that's what happens whenever people get arrested. And, um, so, you know, over that thirty days, like once my head started clearing up, um, you know, that's whenever I really started like absorbing this knowledge and these twelve-step programs. And, you know, being able to work with the therapist and all these underlying issues that just I never thought I had that, uh, were actually just a big part of why, you know, like I was using and why I was living this way. Um, so, you know, once I jumped in and after I was there for thirty days and I started, my head started clearing up, like I realized like, you know, hey, man, it's not going to hurt you to be here, you know, for whatever amount of time it's going to take to make sure that whenever you leave here, you know, your, your life's better and you're living a better life. And, um, you know, I ended up staying in treatment for, you know, I, I did like a residential treatment program after detox for three months, and then I did two months of, uh, sober living. And then on top of that, I did, you know, like another month of, um, of outpatient treatment. Um, but it was the, but it was the best decision of my life. It was the greatest thing ever. Um, to be able to go through this process and, you know, it completely gave me an opportunity to recreate my life and work on myself. And, um, you know, like today, like having the opportunity to be able to work with other men and women and, you know, like other, you know, wrestlers or pro athletes or whoever I get to work with today and helping them recreate their lives, like there, there's nothing like it. Cause I mean, there's nothing like sending somebody come in at the point where they could care less if they're alive or dead. And, um, you know, watching them walk out the door and then on top of that, just getting some ti- some time in recovery and having some sobriety time and just watching their lives come together. Like it's the greatest feeling ever.
I can't argue that point, not even a little bit, uh, because watching people recreate their lives is easily the most beautiful thing in the world. Uh, just one quick offshoot question, uh, what's more nerve-wracking, performing in front of fifteen thousand people or being on this town hall?
Um, well, normally I, I would, you know, if a few years ago, like if you'd asked me on here, I probably wouldn't have showed up just because there's, you know, like Chief's on here and he, he probably been looking for me at that point. So. But nah, I mean, it's, it's an honor to be on here, man. Cause you guys, you're doing great things up there. And like I said, like I would love to bring a program like second chance to Tampa. Um, every, you know, God, we need more of these, man. Like we need them everywhere.
We'll definitely talk after, uh, and see what we can do because I'm, I'm not afraid of Tampa, although it's hot. It's a little nicer up here right now. But, you know, thank you very much, Shannon, and, uh, hopefully we'll have some good questions for you over here in a little bit. I'm going to move on to the next panelist, Mr. John Podora. So welcome back. Uh, John is the only returning panelist from our last town hall. Uh, John is an individual in long-term recovery, a guy I've gotten to know over the last several months. And, uh, he's got some big plans and some big ideas and some big thoughts. And he stepped into the political arena, uh, and he's really going to work hard, hopefully to try and help individuals struggling with substance use disorder. And, uh, John, just, I'm going to let you take it away, man.
All right, Chris. Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to start off and I would just like to thank everybody who took time out of their busy schedules, the panelists, um, and everybody watching from home. Because I'm so proud of events like this because, you know, this is where it all begins. Through community-based collaboration, when we bounce ideas off of each other, people that are from different walks of life, this is how we make progress. We don't make progress by sitting around in our closed little groups and talking about things. So when we engage each other within our own communities, I think we're really going to further ourselves. I have a bunch of things written down tonight and I'm going to try to stay on topic. It's a little bit hard. I'll introduce myself first. My name's John Podora. I'm an individual in long-term recovery. I'm a husband to three, I'm a husband, I'm a father to three beautiful children. And I'm also a candidate for, uh, Pennsylvania State House Representatives here in the thirty-seventh district in northern Lancaster County. Um, really what inspired me to run in the first place was primarily my own interactions within our criminal justice system. Um, if you rewind seven years ago, a little over seven years ago, I was actually lying in a jail cell. I hit the rock bottom of my life. It was during those lonely nights that I spent alone in a jail cell that I decided that I didn't want to become another statistic. I didn't want to end up like my friends who I watched pass away. I didn't want to end up like my friends who spent years of their lives going through the revolving door prison. I was so lucky that I had such a supportive wife who stuck by me the entire time and encouraged me when I needed it the most. So I made a commitment to myself, to my wife, to my children, that I would get better. And I was able to do that and I was really, really fortunate. I was given a second chance by my loved ones and by our community. If you would have told me seven years ago that I'd be running for office in Pennsylvania, I would have told you, you weren't talking about me. So rock bottom to progress. Uh, I want to encourage everybody who's watching tonight to share this with your brother, your sister, your neighbor, your mother, anybody who's struggling. You've just heard from multiple people that are in long-term recovery. We've hit the rock bottom of our lives. Many have contemplated suicide. Many have sat isolated in a jail cell, but you can turn your life around. There is hope. So that's the biggest reason that I'm running because I want to inspire people that are still suffering from substance abuse disorder. I want to show them that there is a light at the end of the tunnel and that you can build yourself a better future. And it's through organizations like Blueprints that you can really get the recovery that you need to get ahead. Um, I read an article the other day and it said that twenty-five percent of all people have contemplated suicide. Or sorry, twenty-five percent of all young people since the start of the COVID nineteen pandemic have contemplated suicide. The, those are some astounding statistics. Um, we've also had an increase in substance abuse and we've also had an uptick in overdose. So we know now more than ever that we need to, we need to address the problem. Um, we have to go further than what we're doing now. I love the second chance program. I love to hear that, um, you know, not all in law enforcement are numb to substance abuse disorder, that some of them actually recognize that we need solutions to move forward. I appreciate that the warden has taken on this issue, but let's be, let's be real. We need to go further. We need bold structural change if we're going to solve these complex issues within our community. Um, we need, we need to pass criminal justice reform. And that's one of the things that I intend to do when I get to Harrisburg and I'll speak about that in a little bit. Um, one of the biggest things that I want to start by saying, and I mean no disrespect to anybody in the law enforcement community. We can't even keep drugs out of prison. So at what point are we going to turn our entire society into a prison and expect positive results? So we heard that tone throughout the night, just I worded it a little bit differently. Um, when I was incarcerated, I remember that I, I felt a little bit of hope. As crazy as that sounds, I thought, you know what? I'm going to use this experience as a rehab. I'm going to get access to treatment. I'm going to be isolated from the drugs. I'm going to get my mindset. And I got into prison and to be honest, I was surrounded by just as much drugs as I was on the streets. And that was really disappointing to me. That was really disheartening. Um, it was really hard to maintain sobriety. Um, when you're detoxing in a jail cell and you're watching people use. So that's a whole nother issue that we really, really need to address. Um, I'll agree and say that substance abuse disorders is a disease and we need to focus on harm reduction. Um, when I get to Harrisburg, I'll be sponsoring legislation that'll systematically reshape our entire criminal justice system. And we're going to start by saying that addiction is not a crime. We need to declare addiction a public health crisis and we need to prioritize the treatment over the incarceration. We need to expand on the second chance program because what we need to do is we need to keep these non-violent drug offenders out of prison because they don't belong in there in the first place. The only thing that I'd like to disagree with what the chief said is I, I wrote notes down here where he said a lot of times that, um, people don't go to jail for simple possession. That might be true, but I'll also offer another perspective to that. I had multiple, um, counts of heroin possession. Most people that get arrested for simple possession don't just get arrested once. They get arrested two times. They get arrested three times. And I'm here to tell you, if you're in a conservative county, you are definitely looking at doing, um, some time in prison for your second offense. A lot of times even your first offense. And we have indirect time that people serve. People get put on probation and I've seen this firsthand, hundreds of people during my, um, stay in county prison. They would get on probation. They might get a twelve-month sentence. Then they end up actually, you know, they get it, sorry, they get a twelve-month jail sentence and with maybe a year of parole afterwards. And I watched people that would do ten, eleven months of parole after that out on the streets. They'd have one bad day or one, one thing derail in their life and they'd get a parole violation. They'd go right back to prison. Well, some of the counties, I'm not sure exactly how it works in Lancaster County, they would pull those entire ten months that you serve and make you re-serve that all over again in prison. So a lot of times what I saw is that people that were on parole and probation actually ended up serving more time than if they would have just taken the jail sentence initially. Um, I dealt with that personally myself. But I was, like I said, I, I don't want to compare myself too much because I was able to, to get out of that situation. So if we go back to some of this, um, progressive legislation that I'm, uh, going to sponsor when I get to Harrisburg, I have a couple of things written down here. We need to A, keep families together. We know that no one gets better in a jail cell. We'll prioritize the treatment over incarceration. To solve these issues, we need to rewrite the laws and we need to be sure that non-violent drug offenders are kept out of prison in the first place. We need legislators who aren't groomed by corporations. We need legislators who have actually dealt with substance abuse disorder. I hear a lot of them talk in Lancaster County as if they're champions of substance abuse. But they don't interact with the community, very seldom. They don't have advisors from people who are, uh, individuals in long-term recovery. A lot of them just do it for, you know, as a reelection campaign. Well, I intend to take that further. I've gone through this myself. I know the pain and suffering that I brought upon myself and upon my family. And I want to do everything that I can to keep people out of that situation. I know the pain and suffering that I brought upon myself and upon my family, and I wanna do everything that I can to keep people out of that situation. We have to tear down the destructive stigmas that surround both addiction and recovery. Because fifty percent of the problem is that the stigma behind it. There are so many good people out there that wanna re-enter the workforce and they can't. Because they're branded with a criminal record. I know people that have misdemeanor charges from over ten years ago, myself included. I've been the qualified candidate for many of my jobs, but I've gotten turned down because of a, a criminal history. I know people that have had fifteen years of sobriety and have a criminal record from even their, their early adulthood, and they're still being compounded by that. So we need to set up these, we need to set up protections for people. We, we need to expedite pardons. We need to let people know that after you've done five to ten years, we could debate on that, five to ten years of sobriety. You've been reintroduced to your community or productive member, you're raising your family, you wanna make more money so that you can ra- you know, create a better life for them. We need to expedite board of pardons, that in order to get, uh, criminal charges expunged in Pennsylvania, it's a, a god awful process. I mean, most of the time it takes over two years, just to even get a hearing in front of a board. Once you get in front of the board, you have to have a unanimous approval rate, I think by a, a board of five people. So, w- we definitely have a lot of reform that we could bring into that equation. Um, we also can expect the police chiefs and the wardens to fix all of these issues. That's why I said that we're gonna need bold structural change and creative legislation. We're gonna have to open up the floor in Harrisburg to, um, debate. We're gonna have to tear down these destructive stigmas that a lot of our lawmakers believe that people are still junkies, people are worthless addicts. We have to dissolve that immediately. If we let that kinda narrative continue, it's only gonna harm this movement for generations to come. Um, some of the harm reduction things that we can implement and really strengthen are, um, syringe access programs. Naloxone access programs, and even though it's a controversial idea, safe injection sites. A lot of people don't like to hear that, but if the number one, if the name of the game is to save lives, then safe injection sites are going to save lives. I know people personally that would've gone to those sites. I know people who have died from heroin overdose, who would've gone to those sites had they exist, had they existed at the time. Just to be able to have access, uh, they, they didn't wanna die. They were just so self-consumed in their drug addiction and they didn't know how to escape it. So, I believe that we need to completely reform the war on drugs. It, it disproportionately affects communities of color, it, it's affecting people all over rural America, and that's why it's in the spotlight. But the reality is, is that this has been ravaging cities for generations. Um, the tough-on-crime approach doesn't work anymore. We definitely can't incarcerate, incarcerate or arrest our way out of this mess. And some counties and some areas of the state are actually doubling down on the war on drugs. We're going back in time and that's something that we can't have. So, that's what I plan on doing when I get to Harrisburg. Um, I love to use my, my hardships as a means to inspire other people. I always leave my phone line open for anybody who, um, needs help. Any, anybody at all who needs help, please reach out to me personally, because I've been there, I've hit the absolute rock bottom of my life. And I've rebuilt it and I'm really proud to be on here tonight. I think we have some really great ideas and solutions. And I look forward to working with you all in the future and, uh, thanks for having me on tonight.
Thank you, John. Uh, definitely. I'm starting to hear an echo, but, uh. No, the, uh. You're very right about a lot of those things, and I was thinking while you were talking about how I, as a convicted felon. I'm still not even technically qualified to work at McDonald's. Uh, if I went and applied. Tomorrow, I'd probably get shut down by every McDonald's in the area. And it's kinda strange as a person who, you know, has a real estate license now fifteen years after my last conviction and. Uh, you know, there is definitely a lot of stuff that needs to change, and I'm thankful that there's someone standing up and, and doing something about it. And so for that, I commend you and thank you. And I think we should bring John Odermat back in, start pulling some questions and. There he is.
Alright. Here I am. Yeah, so, uh, let's actually, let's bring everyone back in here, because I think it's gonna be too hard to, uh. You flipping back and forth, I'll probably mess something up. So we'll bring everyone in. And I think the first thing we wanted, uh, to start with is, uh. I believe Chief Wiz had a couple of questions he wanted to ask the, uh, the fellow panelists. Let's, uh, let's do those first.
And, and particularly to, uh, Shannon and, and Dave, first of all, uh, I appreciate you guys. Openly discussing, uh, and, and John as well, openly discussing, uh, your past and your history, but to, to Shannon and Dave, uh, Shannon, you really kind of. Brought this home when you were talking, uh, there's so many people that think that, and I mentioned this, you know, when I was talking about. That drugs are like an inner-city issue and they have this mindset that it only affects a certain group of people, right? Um, clearly that's not the case, right? We, we know that, but my question to you is. How do you see us, uh, whether it's police, whatever, how do we get that, uh, awareness to the community? So we get kinda the, some community members' heads. Out of their recum and realizing that, that this is, this is a problem. Uh, it, it crosses every socioeconomic group. Uh, how do we do that? Uh, do you guys have any suggestions?
Yeah, I, I, you know, like, I think that comes whenever somebody like yourself and somebody, you know, like myself or. You know, like John, whenever we can come together and we can show, you know, the two different sides of the streets. Like coming together and working for the same goal. Um, you know, it's much like, I mean, the Second Chance Program, I mean, that's, you know, that's. That's it right there. It's just, you know, putting as many people together, whether it's, you know, somebody in the entertainment business like myself. Um, you know, like something that I, I really love, like about being able to use. You know, my brand, my wrestling brand now is because like, there's so many wrestling fans out there that watch me on TV now. And, uh, working in recovery now and working in a treatment center, like it's, it's really cool, you know, like, as I come in, like I've owned tattoo shops, like. You know, and sometimes like, just the, just the simple thing of me looking like somebody that you would arrest. Like, you know, not to stereotype somebody, but just with face tattoos or, you know, all tattooed up and, you know, or. You know, being on TV and just being able to break that ice. Um, and being alongside with somebody like you or somebody that's in law enforcement and, you know, like. Putting awareness out there, like, hey guys, like there is hope, it doesn't matter, like we can all work together and we can all fight this thing together. Um, I think that's where it's at, is just bringing as many, you know, I, I guess demographics together as we can. And bringing, you know, as many people as we can from all sides of the street, you know, like, um, there's just, there's so many. You know, working in a, in a, in a facility, you see so many different types of people come through there and it's just right there in your face, like. This thing, it doesn't discriminate, like drug use and alcohol, listen, it doesn't discriminate at all. And I, I think the more that we can put that out there and that we can show that, you know, we can work along with police, like police, they're. They're not your enemy, like they want you to, you know, to change your life, they want you to have a better life, like it's not. Uh, you know, just because the word police is involved, like it doesn't mean that they're out to get you. And I think it's just important that we show that, that we start bringing more of the good to like, rather than, you know, what we're seeing on TV these days. And I think social media can give us that platform, honestly, whether the media outlets are, you know, like, they're not going to, they're not gonna. Cash in on the positive things that, you know, people can do working alongside with the police force. Um, or, you know, the wa- the warden of a prison, like, you know, like nobody, you, all you hear is negative stuff. Whenever you mention warden, it's just somebody that's trying to hold you in prison. Like you, you don't, you don't see people like Cheryl or you don't hear from them. And I just think it's important that, you know, we put. You know, chief, we put you out there, that, you know, Cheryl, we put you out there. And alongside of people like myself or whoever we can bring into this thing and like, we fight it together and we show them that there is hope.
I, I think that's a really great point, Shannon, and, you know, one thing that. And one of the reasons I do my show Felony Friday, you know, which is bringing on people, a lot of time who've been through criminal justice system, been to prison. Is to put a face to face on that, so people can, you know, hear their story and actually start to, to understand that. You know, these are, these are real people going through these situations and yes, they, uh, they've overcome the struggles and they're finding success after. After going through it, but to your point, the same thing for, you know, the police, police chiefs and the wardens. And to put a face on those individuals too, because a lot of times they get lumped, they're like, cops are doing this, or you know, the, the, uh, you know, the, the prison bureau is doing this. And I mean, when you can actually, you know, put a name and a face and a story to a person, that's how we start to work together to find solutions. Um, so, I, I guess let's, let's, uh, start asking some questions here. We have some in the comments. I actually wanted to start, I have a question for Dave, and you brought up something, um. During your talk, the treatment industrial complex. And I know people have heard of the military industrial complex, the prison industrial complex. I don't, could you sort of expand on what, what you mean by that? And I'm assuming you're saying it's, it's a bad thing, so what would be, what would be some ways to? Solutions to dissolve it?
Yeah, I, I guess the point I was trying to make was, um. And I can only speak from my own experience, there was a point in my life where, uh. And I, I lost count, but I, I, I lost count at forty-three treatment centers that I was in. And that includes like detoxes, rehabs, mental hospitals. Um, and I'm gonna be frank here and I hope I don't offend anybody. Um, and this may, a little sarcastic as well, this might come as a shock to some people, but there's some scam artists. That work in addiction treatment, right? There are some facilities that are less than ethical, that, uh, engage in practices that are less than, uh. Helpful for, for somebody that's struggling with, with addiction. And, uh, that's kinda what I was referring to. Um, just the idea that, and I'm gonna be honest. You know. They need to be called out, for lack of better words, like, you know, a lot of times people wanna dance around the issue and act like it's, you know, everything's great. Uh, the reality is, um, some of those treatment centers are complicit in a lot of deaths. Um, there's a lack of oversight, there's lack of, uh, train, you know, like, like, they don't even know how to administer a shot of Narcan to somebody that's. Overdosing in their facility. And you wanna call yourself a professional, like, but, you know, certainly, you know, they'll, they'll rack up the, uh, billing for the urine tests. And, uh, you know, pay their marketers to, to, to get them, people almost like they're headhunters. Um, and that's really what I was referring to.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm glad, glad I asked, not to clarify that. So we have a, uh, I'll, I'll ask a question here, I'm gonna pull up one of the, uh, questions from the chat, Chris, and then if you wanna ask next, then, uh. Go that way, so I'm gonna see if this works. It's a long question, so wow, it takes a full screen. Alright, so this is for, uh, for Chief Wiz and also is a question for, uh, for Warden, uh, Steve Burger. So we'll go with Chief Wiz first. How does, uh, West Lampington Township handle individuals who are having police contact? As a result of a DUI as far as working with the Second Chance Program?
So, we don't refer people, uh, to the Second Chance Program. There's actually, uh, a system, ARD. That, that kinda works, um. To that, to that end. Uh, we arrest somebody, uh, if they get charged with a DUI, if it's their first offense. Um, they are eligible for ARD, which is accelerated rehabilitation disposition. Uh, if they complete, uh, the program, they get the license reinstated, they pay all the fines and the fees. Then they're, uh, they're, they're not charged with a DUI. Uh, they can still seek out Second Chance, but it's, it's not, um, in lieu of charges. Uh, if that makes sense, if that answers the question, so we don't, we don't refer to them as Second Chance in lieu of charges. They would actually get charged, but, but they would get an ARD program, they'd be eligible for ARD, providing they haven't been arrested for, for DUI in the past. Um, so I, I, I hope that answered the question. If not, maybe they can shoot another and let me know.
Okay, and, uh, the second part of that question for Warren Steeburger. Uh, for individuals who are currently incarcerated and are looking for, or looking at state sentences, how do you, how do the current. Programs that you've mentioned differ, if at all, especially the, uh, the Vivitrol program, are the programs. That these individuals cannot engage in due to the uncertainty of if and when they will be transported to.
Right, so I mentioned, I'll, I'll touch on the Vivitrol since you mentioned that there, they can apply for that at, once they get up to the SDI. Uh, the State Institute, uh, so they're able to apply for that. Um, our re-entry class that I mentioned, um, and that is fairly new to us. That is for incarcerated individuals that are ninety days from their release, so that would be individuals that are getting released. Um, as far as the other programming up at the state facility, I'm not familiar with programming that they, that they would offer.
Okay.
Alright, I don't know if, if I can do the cool, uh, question thing that you did. I cannot. Uh, if you wanna pull Ray Newland's first question up here, um. Since I'm not allowed to access that, probably because of the felony that I have. John banned me from being able to put questions on the screen. It's terrible, it's terrible. Uh, Ray, Ray asked, in the current climate with protected groups and speech. Uh, he would like to know how specifically the warden and chief Wiz feel about disparaging speech. And you guys can all read this, hopefully, if you can't read, sorry. Uh, but, you know, chief, you wanna, you wanna answer that one first?
There we go. Um, I, I just. Chris, you're, uh, throwing shade on me here about not reading, I didn't finish, finish when I got taken down, so. Um, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding. That's okay, I wanted to try to understand about employees putting, um, I'm, I'm reading it here. Uh, um, if their staff will be posting things of that nature, okay, just wanted to make sure. So, yeah, you know, uh, you know, Shannon brought up. Um, social media and I think social media has had some value, um, to an extent. And I think also then, uh, to Ray's point, I think frankly, some people, um, are, want to sit in their mother's basement. Uh, and being, you know, social media warriors and making, um. Well, I'll just say comments, uh, like that, like Ray's referring to, you know, you know, people should die that are, that they should die, I mean, that. You know, that, that's just, that's just ridiculous. Um, people do have the, the right to free speech. Um, I also feel like you can't fix stupid, uh, for people who are saying those types of things. But as far as, uh, employees saying that, we have a social media policy, uh, in our department. And, uh, policy in essence is that, uh, they cannot bring our department. Uh, everyone has a right to free speech, right, but we cannot bring our department, uh, into negative light. So if they're making comments like that on social media, uh. Referencing those, those types of things and there'd be significant discipline coming up to and including termination. Because there's, there's just, there's just no reason for that, that, that's just, it's nonsense, it doesn't advance the ball anywhere. Uh, so, that's how we address it.
Uh, the same here, the county has a policy, a social media, media policy and, uh, you know, those. Those staff members that if they were to do that, uh, you know, would receive discipline up until, up to termination. I, 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 you know, in the last several weeks, I don't know if it's the COVID. I have received, uh, a number of emails from our community, uh, just some disturbing emails and. And please, I'm not suggesting that individuals in the community should know my job or our jobs in here. But, um, please don't pretend, I wish I could say, please don't pretend like you do. Um, it's, it's just some of them are rude. We get nowhere with the rude, you know, uh, emails and social, social media. I'm, I'm not on Facebook, I choose not to be, because those things just, uh, affect me greatly when I read those comments. Um, so I choose not to, but, you know, we do our best here, I do our best. I opened the facility to tours at one point, just to show our community what we do here and what we're up against, but, um. Uh, you know, it's, it's just not helpful when you receive those negative type of emails. I would prefer not to, I do answer all of them. But, um, it just puts a real damper on the day. I'm, 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 I'm working with those that wanna help us, you know, and, and move towards, you know. Progressing in the future with, you know, our programs and creating those better individuals, you know, to put back out into our community. So, um, yeah, social media, not a big fan of it.
But you are on social media tonight.
I am, I am, I am, because this is such a positive thing, positive.
I agree, I haven't seen one negative comment yet and, uh, I'm thankful for that. And it really is, it should be about positivity and what we can do to create change together. And I think that this entire panel is all about that and that's why this entire panel is here. So John, I think you're, uh, you're next.
Yeah, so speaking of positivity, I, I have a question for John Podora, but let me bring up something positive for John, so. Anna Cleveland says, John. So, Anna Cleveland says, John, you are fantastic and an inspiration. So there you go, it's been popular all night. But John, I had a, I had a question for you. You brought up safe injection sites. And, you know, this is something that I've talked about on my show in the past. You know, people talk about Portugal or in Switzerland, they've had a program like that since, I think, like 1994. It's extremely successful. So I was hoping you could talk more about how you would envision or imagine something like that being implemented in Pennsylvania?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it, it is a controversial and it is a tricky topic. But like you said, if you look at countries like Portugal, who have actually decriminalized all drug use, I think over a decade ago, they have seen a massive decrease in overall drug use within their, within their country. I mean, it's a positive thing here. If we can keep people out of prison, we can save taxpayers millions of dollars a year. And that, you know, we talk a lot about fiscal conservatism, that should really be at the root of all of that here in Pennsylvania. Safe injection sites are going to be controversial regardless. They're very controversial in Philadelphia, which is a very progressive city. So imagine them rolling out here in Lancaster County. How I would envision them is, I, I guess a lot of the concerns that I've heard about them is, basically, you're just condoning drug use. You're, you're basically making a heroin injection or a meth injection house for people to go to. And I'll just start by saying that I think that's ridiculous, because people are using the substances regardless of whether or not the safe injection site exists. Do I agree that we should keep them away from schools? I do agree with that. I think we should have all types of safety protocols to keep them in areas of the neighborhood where, you know, it's not as controversial, where somebody doesn't have to say, I've heard some really bad things, I don't want junkies coming in, you know, right next to my house where I live on a safe injection site. So really how I envision it, first of all, is through a collaborative effort. We need police chiefs, we need wardens, we need treatment centers like Blueprints, we need state lawmakers and everybody to get together, community members, county commissioners, mayors, elected local officials. We can envision what it looks like, but only together. We can have town halls where we address people's concerns and we put it out there in the open. When we start doing that, then we'll find the solutions to move forward. So I don't know if I can answer that specifically, specifically how I envision it, because I envision it more as a collaborative effort. And I think that it's something that'll really help save lives here in Pennsylvania.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not an easy question, and it's, it's easy for people to, to throw stones at, because it's something that obviously hasn't been done before in this country. But I, testament to you for, for bringing it up, and it's great to bring it into the conversation.
Thank you.
Chris?
I thought you said you had another question, but okay.
I can pull up.
No, it's okay, I see Lori, Lori Gabbert from, it looks like she's watching on YouTube maybe, or, or that one? That's a good one, too. We'll leave that one up there. You're good. This question is for Dave, Dave Malloy. Are you still awake?
I'm here.
Just checking, just checking. Matt loves how you mentioned treating the entire person, and not just his or her substance use disorder. As a recovery house owner, he could direct his residents to 12-step fellowship programs and outpatient modalities for their recovery. But what other good and solid resources can I provide those with mental health diagnoses and other issues? Why do you guys have such long questions? Really challenging my reading skills here. Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
Matt, I can tell you this, I can't speak to like up in this area. I could talk a little bit about kind of the way things are down in Philadelphia. So it's like the biggest problem that I see with, with the, the way things are is like, people can easily access care, right? They can easily, they're in an IOP program, or they're in a recovery house, going to an IOP program. But there's so many other issues that, that individual might present with, whether that's co-occurring medical condition, co-occurring mental health. What I would suggest as a, as a recovery house owner is, is kind of like, go around, find a bunch of, you know, any local resources that you might have, and look to start some kind of partnership with, with the individuals that run those facilities. At the end of the day, this business is about outcomes, you know? And, and I think the longer we go along, you know, funding is going to be tied to outcomes eventually, if it's not already, right? So it's going to behoove all of us in this field to start looking at how we're doing that. You know, how are we connecting folks to actual resources that are going to actually benefit them long-term? Because like, I see it all the time in Kensington. Somebody comes in, they go in a recovery house, they're in there for six months, nine months, whatever it is. But there's got to be other things happening, because what happens is after six months or nine months, something goes on at the recovery house, they get in a fight with somebody, there's an argument, and next thing you know, they're gone. And then I'll see them six months later, eight months later, starting over again, kind of back at square one. But I do think it requires, you know, not to, but it takes a village. It takes all of us in this field working together. One of the things I think that's cool about town halls like this and programs, you know, like Blueprints up here and, and us down in Philly communicating, talking, trying to see how can we partner to, to, for the betterment of the individuals? And you could do that same principle, that same practice with a local mental health facility, with a local psychiatrist. Maybe there's a, I don't know, I know down in Philly, there's Pro Act. We, we have the Regional Council Pro Act. We do a lot of work with them, people get referred over to them. Maybe there's a, a local trauma provider, somebody that's providing trauma treatment for, for individuals that might have serious trauma. Partnering with those kind of programs, while it may not, it's going to benefit all of us in the long run, and most importantly, it's going to benefit the individuals that are in our care.
Okay, I have a question for Shannon. So, you know, in these, in these COVID times, and I think it was John that, you know, pointed out that something like a quarter of young people have contemplated suicide, which is just a staggering statistic. I'm just curious to get your feedback and your input on the types of things that, that you do, and maybe, you know, you could, you could recommend others to do who are in recovery as, you know, that helps, that helps you do a, support recovery, your recovery during these times.
Question, you know, because I, I think that's something that, you know, like, whenever you do, you, you begin recovery, like, you know, you'll hear it a lot, you know, throughout your time in a treatment center, if you've been through a treatment center, is building a network, building a sober network, building a recovery network. And, you know, and for me, like, you know, I, I had a lot of friends before I went to treatment that, you know, I thought were friends, and that was just people that enabled me, or, you know, like, put expectations on me that just caused me to make the wrong decisions. And one of the things that I went through while I was in treatment, I'm sure, like, you know, if you've been through treatment, you probably went through this thing, thing, same thing, is, you know, like, how, you know, how, how am I going to have fun, you know, whenever I get out of treatment? How, how am I, and, and I'm sure some of these people with Chief, like, that you're arresting, like, you know, that's, that's their thought process, you know, whenever they're introduced to treatment for the first time. It's like, oh man, like, you know, how am I going to have fun not drinking, or, you know, doing drugs, or whatever it is? And like, that's one thing that a facility does that I think is great, is it introduces you to ways to have fun, and it shows you you can have fun. Because if you're in a good treatment center, they're going to put you in an atmosphere where, you know, like, a lot of the healing comes from the camaraderie between the, you know, and the community, or, you know, the camaraderie, like, that you have out on a volleyball court, or, and you slowly start getting these glimpses of, like, you know, fun times, like, in recovery, or fun times while you're not using. And it seems simple, and it really is a simple model, but those things, it snowballs. And like, for me, that's what happened. You know, I was in there, you know, I started playing volleyball with people that were shooting for the same goal, to be sober. And then it was like, man, how am I going to coexist with these old friends of mine? These friends that I used to hang out with? How am I going to tell them that I can't hang out with them no more? And that was something that just happened organically, because by the time that I was truly living in recovery, you know, within, I don't know, three months, four months, whenever I was really working a program, and I was really, you know, like, thriving, like, you know, most of those people took themselves out of the equation. I didn't have to go to them and say, hey, I'm in recovery now, I can't hang out with you. It's just, you know, like, my way at that point had already evolved so much from a recovery standpoint. Like, they just didn't want no part of it, because they wanted to continue using. And, you know, and that was okay, and I, you know, I support that, but I, I don't support the drug use, but I just let them know, like, hey, I'm, I'll be over here doing my thing. And like, today, man, like, my networks got so broad, and I've got so many people around me in recovery. Like, those issues, like, I, I can't tell you, like, the last time that I've, I've did an event, or I've did something for fun that I didn't have, you know, most of the people around me that were in recovery. And I think, you know, it's just about building that network that, you know, whenever you get the opportunity to go to, whether it's a Second Chance Program, or, you know, to go through treatment, or just reaching out and just knowing, like, if some, if somebody just hears this tonight, if somebody's tuning in and, you know, they have a problem, like, just knowing that there is hope, that you can, you know, be sober and live happy, and be able to do those things that you're doing, you know, in the state that you're in now, sober. It's just important to get that message out and, and lead, and show them, you know, and show them, and attract them, attract these people in there, and keep them involved and engaged.
I agree, great answer. Chris, did you have a question, or you want me to fire another one out there?
Well, you, you stole basically the same question I was going to ask Shannon, but it's okay. But I have another question for Cheryl. Cheryl, if you could weigh in a little bit. Somebody asked me this earlier, and I don't know if they're tuning in or not right now, but the question that I got was, what do you think we can do as members of the community to help support individuals who are being released from prison, re-acclimate into society?
Right, so I know what my problems are, and I listen, you know, I'm listening, you know, to those of you speak. So the, the real struggle here is housing for our individuals, you know? It's, it's, it's every night, we're releasing individuals, you can come by anytime and see, seven, eight o'clock in the evening, 10, 15 individuals. And it's really sad to know that 80% of them are actually, have no idea where they're going to walk to, other than right over the hill and get back into the same, you know, the same crowd, the same group, same addiction. You know, it's housing here in our city, in our county, is difficult for our individuals, you know? So it continues to be a struggle. We have made some progress in our community, but we have, you know, so if you're asking me that one thing that comes to light, or comes to my mind, is housing for, for my individuals that are leaving, you know, the facility. And I just want to, I just want to throw one thing out as, as I listen to John speak, you know, about, you know, not being able to get hired. You know, I did something unusual about a year and a half ago here at the facility. I took a lot of digs for it, too. I took an individual that had spent time here, seven incarcerations here at LCP, spent a number of years upstate for assaulting a police officer in our community here. And I brought him on board, I hired him. I hired him as a treatment staff member. Who better for my inmate population to speak with and to share their stories and struggles with than somebody that has been there, done that? You know, and I would just implore, you know, members of my community to bring those individuals on board in their workplace, you know? He, he's a wonderful asset to our facility, you know? My staff struggled, you know, my correctional officer struggled with, yo, you're bringing this guy on board? He was once up in a, in a cell, warden, but they have grasped him, he does a wonderful job here. You know, so I know I'm off track a little bit there, but I just needed to be able to say that before the, the evening ended. I think we need to do a better job, you know? People make mistakes, we all make mistakes. Some of, some, you know, you could be one, you know, mistake away from coming in my back door this evening, you know, of the facility here. There are people that need to be in jail, don't get me wrong, there are people, I see them here. But many of my inmates do not need to be here. They would serve us better in our communities. And I know that, and I just, I just need, we just need to get that word out, and, and what that looks like. And I think that's what we're all saying here this evening. So sorry, that was a long answer to your short question, but I just needed to say that before the night ended.
That's amazing to, to hear a Warden say that. And I think a lot of people would be shocked to hear a Warden say that a lot of the people in the prison don't need to be there.
It's true, it's true, yeah, it's very true.
It's just, I, that's the, the nature of the broken system that we have.
Yeah, and I am more excited about, when you told me that story about you hiring that person, I thought that was one of the greatest things ever. And, you know, when I put in my application to, to be able to come into the prison, I'm still waiting on a word back. You know, but, you know, I, I was a little worried that I wouldn't be allowed to go into the prison. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, breaking down those barriers and allowing individuals who've experienced the things that the people who are in there currently are experiencing is so important, and it's so refreshing to hear you say something like that. And I just couldn't be more excited about the opportunity of working with you and the prison to try and bring some light to the individuals who are currently in there and can't be a part of this tonight. And Chief Wiz, I'm still waiting for my badge also.
But I, I need to say also, credit to the staff member that I brought on board. The police officer that he assaulted, they be, he befriended him. I mean, he was actually a best man, best man at his wedding, they wrote a book together. So credit goes to, to that police officer as well here in our community, because I'm not sure without him that my staff member wouldn't have had that support and that direction. So again, you know, it just, it's just a wonderful moment, it's a good story to share.
So Chris, what do you think, want to do some closing statements? Let people go around and close it up? Do you have another question you want to ask, or?
I was going to, real quick, ask Shannon if, if the COVID-19 experience has impacted his personal recovery in any way? And, you know, if there's somebody watching who is struggling right now with the, the lack of personal connection, that COVID has kind of taken away, if there's any advice that he has for that person listening right now?
You know, at, at first, like, it was, it was a little scary, you know, because like me, I'm a, especially these days, like, my recovery, like, I, I do everything, man, like, I'm, I'm a very outside-driven person. So like, I, I just took my activities outside to where it was just me, like, or just somebody that was close to me that I'd already been, been around. And, you know, like, I just did a lot of activity, I just tried to stay, stay engaged, and just, I did a lot of reading for myself, like, I, you know, I went to a lot of, a lot of books, man, a lot of, you know, a lot of spiritual, a lot of meditation. And for me, it was just staying active, just to, you know, keep my mental function where I needed it, and just so I could keep my recovery going strong. And just, you know, with technology these days, too, like, it was, it was easy for me to be able to attend meetings and, you know, because me, like, I, I love staying connected and AA, like, it's just something that, you know, I'm a part of, and like, I'm just networking into it, and like, I, I just, you know, I sponsor a lot of people. So, you know, if you know anything about AA, like, being, being a sponsor and having sponsors, like, how engaging that is within itself, because you're getting phone calls around the clock, especially at the time, like, you know, with the, with COVID going on. So I, I just tried to stay, you know, as engaged as possible, just with as much literature as possible, and just tried to stay outdoors as, you know, as much as I can, just where I was safe, and, you know, most of the time alone.
All right, John, do you want to, you want to pick people for closing statements and put them up on the screen in your fancy way?
Sure, I'm just going to go, I'm just going to go around in the order I have everyone here. So we'll start with, with Warden Steve Berger going first, just, nope, two minutes, closing statement. And, all right, here we go.
I just want to thank you again for the invite tonight. This gives me motivation. It's, it's just, it's just nice to see and to hear people speak and feel the same way that I do. I, I know that I often get, oh, you're a Warden, and somebody had mentioned on the, somebody on the panel had mentioned earlier, you know, we, we always get that negative connotation that goes with us. But I truly have my staff and my inmates' best interest in mind. And I just look forward to the wonderful things that we can And I just look forward to the wonderful things that we can all do as a community, as we partner through these struggles. We're not going to get it right, you know, all the time. But I think just being here as this group, uh, you know, on this panel shows that there's, there's so many people in our communities that want to make a difference in, in those lives of the individuals that need it the most. So I'm committed, uh, uh, I'm dedicated to making it happen. So, and I just thank you so much for letting me be a part of this.
Okay, and next we'll go to Chief Wiz for his closing statement.
I, I also want to thank everybody, um, for the opportunity to be here and thank for, I thank everyone for their input. And I just want to tell a really quick story if I could. Shannon, you brought up the, uh, the tattoos. And, uh, it just made me think when my son played hockey, uh, ever since he was a little kid and, and, uh, I signed him up when he was like six years old, I signed him up and I went into the arena. And, uh, this guy comes to me and I said, Andy, here, you signed my son. And, you know, I need to see so-and-so, who's the coach? And the guy tells me, I, I'm the coach. And I look at him, he's got tats, sleeve tats, you know, from his hands up to his neck, whole nine yards back to neck, front of both arms. And I'm thinking like, oh man, what, 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 what am I doing here? So I, you know, I get home, I tell my wife, I'm like, I don't know how this is going to turn out. I mean, this guy's got sleeve tats up in his neck, whole nine yards. And of course, you know, I, I always thought myself as a, as an understanding person and, uh, you know, I, I made that, that judgment. And of course, as it turned out, phenomenal coach, phenomenal person, kids loved them, uh, the parents loved them. And it was just one of those like, like reality checks to smack in my head like, like, you know, hey, remember, don't, don't judge people like that. And it just made me think of that Shannon, when you brought that up. But I really appreciate, uh, what you guys do, uh, and, and, and getting out there and, uh, and reaching people and providing that support to people. It's, it's awesome to hear, it's awesome that you guys take that time out, uh, and, and are giving back. And if I could just say one thing to everybody that's out there, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's not where you start in life, it's where you finish. And it's not where you start the race, it's where you finish the race. And, uh, everybody makes mistakes. You know, we're, we're all young and dumb, uh, at, at some point, uh, some point we hope to get it right. But, uh, but people need that second chance. And, uh, Chris, the work that you were doing with Second Chance PA, it's, it's incredible, it's awesome. Thank you so much for bringing that to my attention, uh, so we are able to provide a service to our community. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And next we will go to Dave Malloy.
All right, uh, thank you guys again so much for the opportunity tonight. I guess I kind of want to end a little bit about, uh, just the whole experience of COVID. I know, um, earlier we were talking about recovery as being, uh, you know, you, you stay connected to people and you, you know, newly, people new to recovery are obviously, they're going to tons and tons of meetings and are doing all these things. And, uh, it really was able to, to show me on a, on a, on a personal level that there is a daily program of recovery that I need to be engaged in every day. And, and some of those actions don't, they don't require my attendance at a meeting, they require, uh, quiet contemplation on my part. That frankly, at times I, I, I lack it. So, uh, there's a, there's a silver lining to everything. I'm an old deadhead, so every silver lining has a touch of gray to it, right? And for me, the, the experience of, uh, this whole thing with COVID was getting me back in touch with the, the daily practices and I need to do to, 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 to make sure that I'm in a, in a good position. There's a gentleman named William Whitey coined a phrase called, uh, wounded healer. And I think several of us on this, on this, uh, town hall tonight would fit that category. Where our own injuries and our own past and our own pain are the very same things that make us, uh, so profoundly helpful in, in situations. And, uh, the truth for me is if I'm not right, uh, I'm not going to be able to be helpful. And, uh, for me, it's, it's critical that they, they have to go hand in hand. Uh, again, I want to thank Chris for the opportunity. It is wild to me that, you know, we went from kicking a hacky sack outside of Karen Foundation to, to, to this. And just for the record, he, he really wasn't very good at hacky sack. So that's all I got again, and, uh, thank you guys.
Hey, Dave, one more thing, what, what's the most, what's, how many times did you and Chris kick the hacky sack back and forth? What was your record?
I don't, it wasn't many. I mean, between, between, like I couldn't even see his face. He had four days sober, his, his hair was like covered his entire face. And, uh, you guys can't really tell, but I'm, I'm big and out of shape. So I, I don't think neither one of us were very good that night. I was just trying to be cool.
We were, we were really good. I mean, we were like professional level. Oh God.
Oh man. All right. So I, I don't know whatever happened to hacky sack, the game just sort of disappeared. But, uh, anyway, let's move on and, uh, we'll go to Shannon next.
Chris, I appreciate you, uh, you know, you invited me on tonight and I appreciate all you guys that are on here tonight. You know, man, like Chief and Warden, um, you know, you guys, like what you're doing, you know, with, uh, your programs, you know, i- it's amazing. It's, you know, with using the, something like the second chance program, like it's gonna, it's definitely gonna save lives. And I just, it's just important, I think, that we all just keep doing what we're doing and pushing forward and working together. You know, it, cause for somebody like me, like as much as I would love to walk into a police department, I think, and, you know, and, pitch this second chance program, like sometimes it's hard for, for people to do that, I believe. And, but whenever you have guys like you, Chief, that are, you know, like fighting for the same goal of, you know, to save lives and just not incarcerate somebody, like I think it's great, um, that we do this and just figuring out a way that we can do this on a, a broader scale. And just, um, like I said before, man, addiction and alcoholism, it don't discriminate. Cause it's not just, you know, it's not just one demographic that's, you know, that's going through this stuff, man, it's everybody. And I think just continue doing what we're doing and fighting a good fight, man. But it's just important that we get the word out there somehow, whether it's social media or, you know, I, I don't know what it takes, but you know, the louder we can all be together, like I think the more lives we're going to save. But I appreciate all you guys.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. And lastly, we will go to John Podora.
Okay, so I, I always try to keep, um, all of these events as apolitical as possible. Because I don't believe this has anything to do with politics or ideology. But because we're talking about what we can do in the world of politics, I'd just like to share a, a little excerpt about my campaign and, and some of the messaging that we've been using. The messaging we use a lot is unity, vision and progress. And what that actually means is that the catalyst of progress is unity through coalitions, through building effective coalitions of people from all different backgrounds, political ideology, um, whether you want to talk about religions, life experiences. The more we operate as a collective, the higher, the higher our success rate is going to be. That's something that I believe, I, um, I don't believe in political boundaries as much as many other people do. I believe in our ability to function through unity. And I think that that's something that we need to really work on now more than ever in this country. I would also like to close out with something called self-reflection. There is a little bit of positive to the COVID-19 crisis, as crazy as that sounds within the addiction community. Um, I read a book when I was going through my recovery and I think it was called Looking Glass Self. And it's actually a concept where, um, the individual focuses on who they are, who they actually are, not who they portray themselves to be when they're out at work or when they're with their friends. Or when they're, when they're going through detox or they're in a jail cell or who they are as a, a former drug addict. Somebody who you actually are beneath of everything. Okay. When you have the ability to let go of your trauma from the past. When you have the ability to sit down and meditate about who you are, where you've been and where you want to be. When you have the opportunity to forgive people that have hurt you in the past. When you have those opportunities to reflect on that trauma that impacted you, to drive you down the path of substance abuse. People have had a lot of self-reflection time. And I understand that the suicide rate is increasing. I understand the substance abuse disorder is going up. But one of the most effective methods of treatment for people to recover is to self-reflect. Kind of tear off that, um, barrier that we put up to the world. I mean, you can look at yourself and learn to love yourself for who you are and learn to forgive yourself for what you've done. That's when you can build a successful future. So again, this message just goes to anybody tonight who is sitting at home struggling and thinking that they can never make it out. You can, your life matters and you have people around you who are willing to help you every step of the way.
Wise words, John Podora, thank you for that. And let's bring Chris back on to close this out. Final words from the man himself who made this all happen.
I just want to thank every, every member of the panel, uh, for taking your time out, especially the time that it took leading up to this event. Uh, and really just bringing to the community, all this hope and all of this positive everything, uh, it's just, it's amazing to watch and it's amazing to be a part of. And, and just coming from, you know, being incarcerated, you know, 13 plus years ago, to here where we are today is just unbelievable. So I think the message to leave with everyone is that if you are at home and you are struggling and you are feeling off and you are desiring a better life, there's a very, very simple way to do that is reach out for help. Reach out to some of the people that you saw talk tonight. You know, we have, this will be on Facebook forever. You can reach out, send a Facebook message, uh, you know, hunt John Odermat down at his house. He will go out of his way to help you, uh, in any way he can. And, but for real, thank you everybody so much. It's just amazing to be a part of. And if you are at home struggling, uh, please reach out for help. Your life does matter and John Podora stole my thunder with that closing because it was perfect.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo real quick what, uh, Chris said and thank everyone, all the panelists for participating. And also everyone who listened, everyone who commented and participated, um, thank you for your questions. And please share this, uh, shared like, uh, like Chris said, this can be up on Facebook and YouTube forever. So share it around, it'll be published on Friday on the Alliance Liberty Podcast on Felony Friday. So send this to a friend and, uh, thank you, everyone.